Well, I'd like to call this meeting to order in our first order of business. The Blood Legion. The Blood Legion is to the flag of the United States of America and through the parliament for which stands one nation under God, indivisible, limited and just as one. Well, the first order of business, you all got a new sheet to accept the agenda for tonight and honorably add the audit close up. We'll talk about that in a bit. You get a motion to approve tonight's agenda. Set it. Your motion and your second, all favor?
Aye.
All opposed, so carry. With that, we'll start the audit report. Gotta be honest, I kinda feel like doing karaoke with a microphone in front of me. Been known to croon a few songs.
[Laughter]
All right, well, I am Doug Host on the principal on your audit, and I'm here to present the results of the audit procedures that we did. And what we'll go or I'll go through is the PowerPoint that you have in front of you. And it's, all in all, is a great audit. It's been done for about a month. We just, this is the first opportunity we had to get here to present the results. And honestly, with how your financial statements are set up, I don't think I've ever mentioned this, but you have to be one of the first audits in the whole state that is ever done by the middle of March with being the full accrual in the way you're reporting. So that's, that's pretty darn cool, if you ask me. So there's a lot of info that needs to be pulled together and in a very short period of time. And then you gotta be available for our whole team to ask about 1,000 questions and ask them for more documents. So kudos to everybody here. The audit went very well.
Oh, the disco coming.
Boy, but the...
[Inaudible]
I'm not sure if I know what that word means. Disco. But, all right. So on page two is just the agenda. Those are different category topics I'll touch on today. Page three, audit standards drive and dictate all the procedures that we do. And then when we're done, they require us to fill out a four-page letter. It's boilerplate. It's basically the exact same as it's been for the previous five years, except the years changed. But I'll hit the highlights. We issued a clean opinion on your financial statements. That's good. That means they're materially correct. We didn't have any disagreements with management when we were doing the audit, and no difficulties in performing the audit. So again, thank you to everybody for their great cooperation and all the smiles when we are on site.
Well, we really appreciate that because one of our big things is, and we keep asking that, transparency. There's nothing more transparent in an audit.
Absolutely.
On the financial or fiscal end, and this is really important, not just to us, but all our constituents.
And we're external. So, you know, it's a fresh look from someone from the outside. So that is actually a very refreshing outlook and positive outlook. Not all places have that same viewpoint. So kudos again to the city and staff and leadership. Page four, I mentioned the audit standards. They require us to do certain communications, and that's what's listed on page four. Just required to tell you that we help put, we're with the clerical process of putting your financial statements together. Required to tell you that you don't have enough people to fully segregate all the accounting functions. That's not anything new, and especially for a city your size. And we did just make a couple adjustments for financial reporting purposes. Just to get, I don't know, just sometimes things just need to be put in a different bucket when the financial statements get put together. That's pretty much what we had to do. Or is all we had to do. Page five, if we encounter significant deficiencies in your controls, we're required to communicate those to you. Happy to report there were none of those. The state auditor's office puts together about a 25-page pamphlet manual where we're required to test the city's compliance with all kinds of different state statutes over cash and dispersments and debt. And last year, we, in that testing, there was, it's an annual requirement for the city to delegate the authority to do electronic transfers. We're resolving that for this year because we did see that delegation of authority in the minute. So that's good. There's another statute that we test for, and it says the city needs to levy for 105% of the principal and interest due in the next year. The city levied 100%. There's enough funds on hand, but just keep that in mind in the future. When you do have debt service, there is a requirement to set the levy at 105%. And the reason that is, is in case somebody doesn't pay their taxes to cover the debt, well, then there should still be enough to make those payments. But you're sitting, you're very stable financially. I'll touch on that in a little bit, but we're just required to report that one. So, page seven, we look at how's the city doing financially. And the slide is titled Financial Results, and you can see the chart is, for five years, it's very stable, but it bumped up pretty good. In 2021, about 239,000. And it's actually the first time in the last five where we've seen an increase. There's a lot of unique stuff that happened in 2021. There was some ARPA money that came in, some new grants. So before we did the audit, we kinda brainstormed like, what are we expecting to see? And once the financial statements, we started auditing them, it's like, yep, everything we kinda anticipated came to fruition in what we saw in the financials. So a good year financially overall. On page eight, we look at the general fund. That's the main operating fund for the city. So we like to take a little closer look at that. And here the chart, it looks at the amount of reserves you have, the number of months of expenditures that you kinda have in your reserves at the end of the year. And at the end of 2021, that was six months. And I mentioned in the past, a good target, no law, but a good target, and the state auditors have said no less than five months. Well, you're sitting at six. So you're right, right in the ballpark there. And honestly, this is a pretty common chart that we put together for our audit clients. And I don't know, this may be the most stable one I've seen for all the audits. I mean, that bar is almost straight across. And the fact that we've had two years of COVID and dealing with the pandemic and dealing with things that you just never have before, that's a testament to the council and the guidance and leadership that still held. It's windy out there, out on the lake driving a boat, you're still keeping a nice steady course. On page nine, we look at where the governmental funds are coming from. As in prior years, taxes and intergovernmental revenues, those are grants and some shared revenues. They're still the main source of revenues. The taxes were up about 40,000 in total for the year across all the funds. And intergovernmental revenues were up about 82,000. The city received a small cities development grant that was some new funding in 2021, and then also the ARPA money. There's something else. Cheryl, maybe you can help me with the acronym because I'm drawing a blank offhand. LCCMR. Ring a bell?
Right, there's some reimbursement money from that.
Yeah, so those are the three biggest reasons why the grants went up. On page 10, we look at where the city's governmental fund expenditures were. Overall, they're up about 480,000 over the prior year, which might be like, oh, wow, that's a big increase. Well, there's a really, really good reason for it, and that's because in 2021, you issued refunding debt, right? Issued refunding bonds, which paid off some old bonds, but you got, the net is pretty much, you're saving money by refunding it, but because those old bonds are gone now, those expenditures are actually shown in there. And that's why you'll see the big increase in principal expenditures. But the other kinda big jump was in capital outlay, about 40,000 compared to last year. I think that was for accounting state aid highway 20 project or something was about 34,000, if I remember right. So, yep. Page 11, as part of the audit, we made, we test that the city made all the debt payments it was required to, and that testing worked out as planned. We verified all the payments were made. And I mentioned you did issue the refunding bonds, and definitely a good reason to do that, just like I've done a couple times with my home mortgage, is you can refinance and save a little money. So good situation for the city there. On page 12, the liquor store fund was kinda more back to normal operations in 2021. The revenues were up about 117,000. Expenses were up about 63,000, which, that ratio is kinda right in the ballpark where we would expect with the increase in revenues. And even in 2021, I don't think you were able to do it in 2020, but in 2021, there actually was a $20,000 transfer out of the liquor store fund, getting back to kinda how previous years' operations worked when there was a profit from the liquor store operations. Page 13, your liquor store is one of the top ranked in the state. It's the third bullet on that page, I think. For 2020, it was still ranked seventh as far as net profit as a percentage of sales, and we pulled that information from the state auditor's office report. But all in all, a good year for the liquor fund.
Do you know what the gross profit percentage was?
I think that's on the bottom of that table. I think it was 59.9, which is actually pretty much right back to where it was in 2019.
Oh, thank you.
Yep.
Can you say number seven?
Yep.
In this Connyard, Canadian, 265 or something?
Yeah, I thought it was over 250.
It was 265, somewhere near that.
Yep. So that, I would say that's towards the top.
For the profit percentage?
Gross profit percentage, or net profit as a percentage of sales. Yep, yeah, 59.9.
Last year, not so much, but this year, we'll be back up there.
Perfect. You have an enterprise fund as well on page 14, the water and sewer fund. Over the last five years, revenues and expenses are pretty much right on. And, you know, for the year, revenues were up about 25,000, expenses were up about 21,000. Now, I mentioned before, this fund hasn't shown a gross profit in about the last 10 years. That's because there's this thing called depreciation, which isn't you writing checks out of that fund. It's just trying to build in a factor for the assets wearing out. And if you didn't have to report that, you'd be showing profits, but I don't know, I think it was like 40-some thousand a year is what these accounting rules require us to put in there. So all in all, very stable year for the city. The general fund, you're sitting at about six months of reserves, which is like right on target according to many recommendations. The enterprise fund, it's kinda status quo, keeping it real close when you put in that paper expense of depreciation. In the liquor store, 45 grand in profit even after the $20,000 transfer. So things are good in Rainier, I would say. And I got time for questions, if any. We good? All right. Well, have a great summer, whenever winter's over, all right?
Anybody in the audience have any questions?
What's that thing about fiscal agent, the position on that? Fiscal agent, is that, that's not part of the audit?
No.
No.
Separate.
Okay. All right.
Thank you.
All right, have a good one.
I think if the resolution accepting the audit close up report, I'll make a motion to accept the audit.
Second. Your motion is second, all favor?
Aye.
All opposed, so carry. Okay, moving on, recommend approval of the minutes. I'm ready to have a chance to read those. Any additions, changes? Need a recommendation, please?
Recommend approval?
I'll second.
My recommendation is second, all favor?
Aye.
All opposed, so carry. To approve the list of claims from March 2022, let's do the chances to draw your names. So Cheryl, let me give a little power on the regular general fund, $1,700. Does that include the skating rickety?
Yes. Three by the skating rickety.
Everything but the liquor store?
Yes, yes.
I was hoping that.
And it went out.
Oh, I know that.
They get 14% for commercial, like that?
Yep. To recommend a...
I'll recommend approval of the business claims.
I'll second. Recommendation is second, all favor?
Aye.
All opposed, so carry. Review the accounts balances and the special collectors for national fund, the general water and sewer funds for quarter 31st.
Motion to table?
I'll second. Motion, all favor?
Aye.
All opposed, so carry. Recommend approval of resolution 22, hold fire to questions. Who's calling to act as fiscal agent? Cheryl, you can complain just a question, and that's just to act as a fiscal agent if we secure the LCMR money, is that correct?
Yeah, so it's a reimbursement grant, and if it happens to be an amount of money that we don't have in, you know, to cover in our checking accounts, that they would, they would pay it and then get reimbursed by the LCMR and act as a fiscal agent. That may, if we need to, so we'll have to go to the county after we pass that.
Basically, it should pass through. They're just gonna pay the bill for us till we get our check, if that's not to them. And that's it, we secure the funding, but you have to start this procedure so we can, you know, take it with county board and make their recommendations and that, so.
They act as a fiscal agent for the county, I mean, the state grant and aids for the snowmobile trips?
Yeah.
And maybe even some other entities, so it's nothing they're unfamiliar with.
Yeah, it's just a, it's a check and balance, I believe. Yeah, it's simple, and they got a big checkbook so they can write the check right away to the contractors or whoever is necessary, and the funds come in and given to them, so.
It's just because the reimbursement may take longer than, than we have to cover the check, perhaps. They're coming in pretty fast, though, so, but I don't wanna write a check for $800,000 when we don't have it in the bank account.
Right, so, anyway, that's in the process, so that's... So with that said, we got the resolution, we question the county for that. Can we get a... I'll check out recommended, recommendation and approve resolution 22, certify what's to do to the county to act as fiscal agent.
I'll second. We got a resolution in a second, a motion in a second, all favor?
Aye.
All opposed, so carry. Recommend the approval of resolution 2206 to elect standard allowances under the revenue loss provision, the American rest fee class. Can you add something to me?
Yeah, under, under the rules for this, this last round of COVID relief funds, they set, they set the standard, previously, they said that you had to prove that you had lost revenue, and now they set this new standard allowance of 10 million. If you, you don't have to prove up to 10 million, so we don't have to prove that we had any revenue loss, and now we can just use all this money for any general governmental services that, that we choose to use it for. And the reporting requirements are a lot less detailed now. So like, like on the second page, where I just get that little spreadsheet about where we allocated some of the money last year, so what we got left now is almost 43,000. And, you know, we can maybe figure out where to use it, but my first suggestion was to perhaps start around the parking lot at the liquor store or wherever, you know, it's just a suggestion.
So they set a ceiling unless it's over $10 million, you don't have to put documentation up. Saves them a ton of paperwork, I guess.
Right, right. So it makes it a lot easier for us and a lot more flexibility in the way that we can use the funds.
Well, yeah, I don't know, they can keep track of all that audit, and if you think about how many, every city's, you have it out there, so they just set a ceiling. Okay, let's see. We recommend the resolution on that to elect the standard allowance. Recommend a recommendation and approve resolution 2206 to elect standard allowances under the revenue loss prevention, the American rescue.
I'll second that.
Well, we have a resolution, we set it, all favor?
Aye.
All opposed, so carry. Liquor store statement, Jen, please? Well, I see we're at another good year. It must be true, this is a little town with a, it's a little town with a, a drinking town with a fishing boat, right? Apparently, drinking boat and fishing boat. Yeah. T year, well, we had a good year last year. Honestly, the audit proved that, and you're three times, or you're one-third higher than that already than you were last year, this time, is what I see. So, you've got a pricing option, so right on the third, you're double what income was last year this time, so, ooh, we do have a problem.
You have a gambling problem, too. We got 43 boxes of pull tabs this month. Does it get any issue with the gambling at all, or, you know, with the tapping machines put in there, pull tabs?
Well, I think everything's running smoothly.
Okay. So do the tabs. We used to give the city $1,000 a month, but now we give it more.
Really?
Yes. And we closed 23 boxes of pull tabs last month. Oh, there.
How did the birthday party go that was going there? The birthday party was fantastic. We need to have more of those. It went really well.
So that's awesome. It's awesome if you can accommodate something like that.
Yes.
I was gonna ask a question. Reasons to subscribe, how was the subject? So we've been like $200,000 for the party, this is, maybe you started adding things that were supposed to be in it or what?
Look at the bright tab. If you look at the, yeah, and the client, it's, it's for, she and another staff were to go to the NFBA conference.
Oh, that went under the conference, yeah?
So it's under that.
We could've took it out in April, but March was so good, and we applied in March.
I see the training conference.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I can see the direct correlation. I see the rent that, that pays in rent dollars, which are income.
Yes.
So, kind of goes hand in hand, if you're paying more rent, stores could make more money. Apparently, they're drinking in pull tabs at the same time.
We don't judge.
All right, everybody, what do you got for this month?
Well, we kinda just went through a lot of stuff, but we have one more cribbage tournament, and then we're gonna move into May, and then we'll have Cinco de Mayo, and we'll do, we have a painting class on Mother's Day for anyone.
Oh, what?
A painting class. We did it a couple years ago before COVID. It was a good turnout, so we're...
So Sherri's here, or no?
It's Wanda Mitchell, and she's a lot of fun, so I suggest everyone come. It's a lot of fun.
She's gonna get a little bit to me, or what's...
We'll just set up tables, and then she'll have like a, I don't know what you call, like the paint easel, and she'll do step by step, and everyone can have a drink, and they can paint, and it's a lot of fun.
What about the...
Yeah, but it's not Pretty Little Birds.
Well, it is true, your voice gets better when you drink, maybe painting does, too.
Of course, yes.
Well, that's good. Okay, I'm all for it, whatever you're doing. Any other questions for Jen?
I think you're doing fantastic.
I would like to see Danny and Amy are in two portions.
Yeah, I'll tell that.
Make sure you're behind that. Okay.
Well, do you have anything else, Jen? Make a motion to...
Motion to approve the liquor store manager's report.
I'll second that.
Your motion is second, all favor?
Aye.
All opposed, so carry. Anything else?
No.
Well, you were the contractor, but leading services, I mean, is, is there a service master?
Service master, well, we put it out for a bit because the contract expired, and we had to put it out for a bit for a couple years. No one bid upon it except for Service Master, and their proposal is attached. And we have to claim that there was an association with the council member, you know, in all the audit statements and everything, so that's clearly documented in the financial statements.
And you've done that.
Yes, yes.
Again, motion to recommend approval of the contract?
I'll make a motion to recommend approval of the cleaning contract for the community.
I'll second.
All favor?
Aye.
All opposed, so carry. Moving on, maintenance before the neck. Obviously, spring, so we had a little flooding issue that I will get some calls, some culverts, you know, pressing them, water breaks, culverts. What else can we add, Jen?
Oh, no water breaks previously, last month or so, just the one up the lake there. Did 24 culverts in the last five days, clearing them out with the county steamer and just busting them loose and pulling out snow out of them with the backhoe and...
Do they let us borrow their steamer, or do we have, we have one at our home, right?
No, they, they gave us two guys.
Well, we, it's cheaper to own anyone, and they've been so reasonable, I don't know what to charge, but whatever it is, we found it's the most effective way to be.
Sometimes you gotta wait a little longer. People call, and they want it done now, and you might have to wait a few hours, but we'll go. Yep. And that whole area over there's been bad every year.
Yeah. One other question. Anything else for Jen? Oh, just having the time of year.
I'm assuming, because I know that it's a brown in the community, that we've got some damage down there in the new docks.
Yep, we got two bad headers we gotta replace. They're already built.
Oh, awesome.
As soon as that gets out, we can put them in.
Are we gonna try to take those out then?
Well, I won't take them out.
I mean, like, for the anticipating next winter, or did that happen?
No, we're building tripods for them right now, just like the Jamison dock.
Okay.
So we'll have a four-tier tripod, we can put cables down to both and just lift the ramps off the dock. For us to take them docks out of there, pull them completely for winter time, and put them back, I'd need eight guys and four more pieces of equipment.
I didn't, I don't know what it takes. I just didn't know if the damage was caused by leaving them in installed all winter long.
Well, and them ramps are, they're, it's new lumber tied to old lumber, so if, you know, if you had a brand-new crib dock sitting there with floors tied to it, nothing probably would've happened, but you're tied to stuff that, when we drill them holes and put in there, I mean, the drill just runs right through, it's a lot of old tempers, so next to what we're gonna do is put them tripods on there, lift the ramps off, slide the ramps up on top of the dock, and then just tie them together. up on top of the dock, and then just tie them together.
So we're gonna leave the ramps off the dock?
Nope, they'll be disconnected from the big dock, they'll be lifted up, and then just shoved against and tied off with rope, so that when the ice does start to shift and move, they can just float around, because there's anchors on the end of the docks too, so they can't shift around on the ends.
Anything else for you? Thanks, Jen. Well, you could, why don't you come over and get them tracks, we've got plenty of room up there now.
Yeah, absolutely.
Anything you want.
Okay.
You know, one thing we may look at as budget goes along a little bit, we should almost be looking at maybe a dump trailer. I know we all gravel around with, maybe you've got a skate steer once in a while, you gotta start taking trees down, you know, you've got something to carry, and you can probably do it in the pickup or just in the thing, but a dump trailer is real handy, you know, for the moment, gravel.
We could, we could use it for, we could use it for every water break we have.
Oh, yeah, you just bring in a little bit of gravel, you know, five, six yards or even a couple loads on top of that, that's all you need to clean up with mud, mud while you're there. I wouldn't, we're, we're looking at the budget and we may ask some things coming up, but maybe whenever you get off it, just price one out and see what we're looking at.
Okay.
I don't even, the cost probably seven, eight thousand bucks or something, but I know.
I know Mike Wilder just bought one too, I could talk to him.
We'll just look at it to the budget, so we've got minus one with our biggest can we can buy, maybe we could issue myself.
Absolutely.
All right, the next item was a petition for vacating the alley, but that has been postponed to May with the weekend, so just to get hold of that.
Does that say, well, that is, that's date of the council meeting.
Uh, what's that?
That is the date of the council meeting, right, Baytown?
Yeah, it's before the council meeting or?
Yeah, I think it was. I put it up at six o'clock.
Six o'clock, yeah. Okay, and maybe it was something like, or maybe ten.
Can I just ask about the number of alleys that you're talking about for that? Because when we look at our plot.
There's like three little twenty-foot alleys or something like that.
Yeah, but they're, they're.
Yeah, yeah, when you look at, there, yeah, I mean, take a look.
They're like that.
Three hundred and fifty, yeah. It's, they've got like twenty-two foot blocks, you know, and then twenty-foot road, you know, right in the middle of.
Ordinarily, if an alley like that is vacated, are they paid for that?
No, no, they're paid.
Well.
It usually goes to the adjacent property owners. Like ten, two blocks, he gets half, he gets half.
Right, but they got paid for it.
Yeah, they got paid, so the city, the city has no property, property interest in, when you read in the L C information memo, there was no, they have no prior interest in.
I don't know what to, I guess I don't know what to pass, things have done, but occasionally, I know maybe International Falls they came for, but I think we vacated some property here and there in Austin.
I don't think there's been, there's been an consistent policy. I mean, I remember paying, charging for an alley at some point in time, or three years later, but it's not, it wasn't a consistent thing, I don't say all through the years, so. And I do know the alley that goes, there's an alley that went across, is this Pine Street or whatever, that went across where our deck would be? And that alley was vacated, and in exchange for that vacation, which my parents owned the property then, then they gave a piece of property to the city.
That would have more of an swap than, or whatever, sorry. But again, this is, you know, we have to call, we have to post it and everything else, so we'll be talking about this at our next.
So is this gonna be like a zoning meeting, or?
It's a separate public, a separate hearing.
Right, we just set it, we just set it prior to our main council meeting, third, fifth, or May ten, May ten council meeting. So anybody that wants, it'll be posted in the paper.
Okay. But the two plans that you look at were like, if there'd be a variance or something like that, particularly in projects?
Right, it's just the vacation. But yeah, in the, in the League of Minnesota City's information memo, it says, as a municipality, it's not proprietary to a man who has taken a public street or, they may have alleys to, whether the street holds an easement in favor of the public granting a right to travel the street. As a result, the city does not hold any interest in the street and cannot ask a petition or payment compensation for the loss of the street to the city as a condition to granting the vacation.
The reason why I'm asking that question is, I mean, that's gonna be a development, so they're gonna make a bottom line.
Oh, probably a ton, sure.
A ton?
I don't know what they're doing, but whatever, whatever it is, we'll discuss that at that meeting, because I haven't seen no plans, I, I don't see them now, and that's the idea of the hearings or whatever, the public meeting, and so that, I guess the city of International Falls had one where they were vacating property around the airport, and two residents come up there, voiced their opinion, and whatever happened, that didn't.
So is it too early for us to try and reserve an apartment there, or?
What was that, Jen?
Is it too early for us to reserve an apartment there?
Gonna have to ask you?
A condominium, perhaps?
Gonna have to ask you.
You'll have to ask the developer.
Well, that's my other question, the rumor is that you're involved with the developer.
Oh, no, that's, that's my position. Because someone that was here earlier was a fellow of this.
But I mean, that is the rumor circulating, that you had co-hosts.
Well, good.
You just wanted to clarify those issues.
Moving on, that's, that's for next, next month's, uh, information on, uh, County, Fifth County Accession Office opening book meeting for small cities scheduled for April twenty-seventh, Cheryl, you have some information on that?
Yeah, and I think I probably didn't even think of it all, but the, they, they said they just have an open book schedule for getting right here where the staff can go in and look, go to the center's office and talk about their property taxes on that day.
Okay. Write a letter. Information on the write letters, that one is to not check, is it?
Yeah, yes, sir.
You see, that's been sent, I don't know what been resolved, typical information.
Where's the blank now?
Uh, pardon me?
Where, where's the blank?
Uh.
Who wants to ask?
George? Oh, there's a guy that went by, by there, oh, this must be driving the mayor crazy, this must be driving the mayor crazy.
Anyway, you know, it's, you know, the guy's had some struggles, it's all for, I mean, he's done some other things, but obviously there's some little shit, we wanna make sure there'd be, the problems, so. The, yeah. The other information on, if there's nothing else, so it's open forum.
John? Yeah, okay, um, I don't know if the council's aware of like the structure of the super district board, so actually it's eight, it's eight-member board, we've got years ago, it got to be eight-member board, and you know that's not typically done, it's an eight ticket, even number board. Anyway, we've been working on, I'm trying to get some restructuring out of that board, and I think we finally are able to. Presently, there are six members from International Falls, one from East Coogee and one from Rainier, and of course, you know, just look at the makeup and the pre-said power there over the years. Anyway, so I think that we've come to an agreement that we could probably petition state and renumber, give three seats to International Falls, two to East Coogee, and one to Rainier. Now, that's based on kind of like who's, you know, balance between the both customers and the size of the city and all that stuff, but anyway, and then, of course, that's just six members, and one member would have to be selected at large from those three, you know, three entities, so that would be seven on the board, but we would be in a lot better position, well, everybody would be in a lot better position, because no one city has that.
So where does the seventh member come from, John?
Uh, from the three, one of the three existing.
Okay, is that, is that names are thrown in there, and then Rainier, East Coogee, and so, and I also vote on?
Yeah, three, two, and one, and then one at large.
Yeah, but I would say.
One of three, you know, I bet you picked up on that, because that is a, it's a dicey point.
That's the decision right there.
Except for the fact that it's better than we have now.
Well, for certainly, we didn't have to pick up that at-large.
We could get an at-large person from here, from Rainier.
Well, right, I think when they ask for that at-large member, the name should be given, and then based on their qualifications, that's who people should be voting for, no matter where they're from.
And I think we got a good makeup of the board right now, reasonable people, and not really highly what it's asked, so, you know, it's, it's bound to be better.
It's gotta be better than it was, or?
Better than that.
Well, yeah, John, when are they going to pick the at-large member, or is he only empty right now?
No, this, this whole thing has gotta be approved by the state of Zona, and I think the statute has gotta be briefed or whatever, so it might take a while, and hopefully that they will agree with our proposal, and there's a good chance that they will, and so it's not a very quick thing, I, I.
Yeah, oh, yeah, that, that's, that's a good move, John, because as you know, right now, one vote, but I like that, and when, if and when this is approved, you know, obviously you gotta think about that at-large member, who'd be so important.
Right.
You know, as far as, as I'm concerned, it'd be.
I tried to work with about two members from Rainier, or from Rainier, but they didn't agree with that, because it just seemed like, you know, the, the size of the communities are so different.
Yeah, well, anyway, John, it's a step forward, when that, if, if, when that's approved, certainly let us know, because if the at-large member, I can, you know, the super board and such, I can think of a few people that would be really good for the board, not just for, for, for International Falls, good for everybody, so. Thanks for that. Just giving you a little heads up, I did travel to St. Paul and met with Tom Lock, to just see what the status of our potential grant was for the, for the period. Obviously, it's, it's not, currently it is not in the L C M R, that address of last Thursday was not in the L C M R grant yet, it may get introduced into the L C M R grant, but the House bonding bill, we had submitted a grant of equal, both to the L C M R and to the State Bonding Commission, so that's happening soon, and this Tom Lock is going to be introducing the bill on the Senate side, Rob Adlin, I believe, is going to be introducing the bill on the House side. There is support, once an independent, once a Democrat, and there is good support, I did meet with Dave Baker, who I think some of you people know, Phil Hall, ex-brother-in-law, was a performer, loves the area, and he was a supporter of the grant, and so, as a Republican, so we have quite a bit of support in the House, all, all the support in the Senate, so it, it's looking good, but I don't know the outcome yet, all that will be decided in, in May, so we'll just, just wait and see then, so we'll keep you updated on that. Any other business?
I just have a quick question. Did you and Mike Welcome, have you guys had your first meeting with, with the ambulance taxi district?
I have not been notified, anything on that, so nothing on the.
So was an email that was forwarded to you asking?
What was that?
There was an email that was forwarded to you asking if you were available on a certain day.
Oh, I, I, she didn't give it to me, no.
I'll send it again.
Okay, I did not see that, so when was, any idea when I might be?
I think it was next weekend. I'm not sure, yeah.
Just one more, how bad is the finance located for the ambulance service? How bad, how bad?
John, they, they've been running about three hundred thousand dollars annually in debt from, for the last five, six years. I don't give you coin on this, because I get so frustrated, they've been, and, and that's what we're having a meeting on, they, they certainly could rectify their costs, I've got numerous ways they could rectify their cost, they just, they just wanna just throw more money at it and have everybody pay part of the bill.
It seems like such a great deal when they took on this, this structure of that.
Well, Jen, you know, it seems like it's very responsive and it was, you know, but as it went on, they, they.
Well, the community population was a downfall, but, you know, they don't have enough calls. They have enough staff to handle, you know, thousands of calls, but they're there for forty thousand hours, and they, and they get fifteen hundred calls, you get four thousand hours of chargeable time, well, you know, you, you just can't balance that, and, and some also, they're short money, and, you know, they either have to adjust their thing, and the truth of the matter is, we need the ambulance service, but the truth of the matter is, we will always have that ambulance service, they, they have to supply the ambulance service for us.
So, you know, last night on the news, they indicated that there was going to be, because it's not just this area that's, has a problem, it's all over Northern Minnesota, and that there was going to be a meeting for rural communities to meet, to discuss the whole issue of the ambulance service. And part of the problem I had is the reimbursement for Medicare, which is so low, Medicaid, Medicare. So, you know, us old people, we could get a ride to town for a couple hundred, but it costs them seven hundred or some such.
Seventeen hundred dollars out the door, I think.
Pardon?
Seventeen hundred dollars out the door is what they.
Yeah, but the reimbursement is so low, which is for everything, but now with this whole group, this meeting, I would think that you'd get something, because I would think that our all rural communities are going to be invited to this.
There, there, I, as I read, I think Cheryl has sent an email from, they're meeting to discuss the ways that funding is sold out to rural areas to help them maintain their ambulance services, where they're not running in a deficit, but that's, I mean, who knows when, you know, everything takes time for them to even assess that, and then.
Yeah, they can, maybe, maybe they can do something.
Truth of the matter is, you, there's multiple ways they can supply the same service for way less money, and they just have to accept that idea, but they're so entrenched, see one thing that I don't tell them, they've got the blinders on, and there's multiple ways of doing it, and that's what the task force is, is trying to.
I know, I argued hardly about this too, but in my opinion, you know, you can't just have a fire person and an ambulance service, you have to have people who are cross-trained, because we don't have fires, we don't have ambulance calls, you need to have people that can do.
Yeah, they, they have plenty of people, trust me.
Oh, they have plenty of, that's one thing, they only do one thing.
They have, they have more people mouth than they do in the tunnels twice a day.
Oh, I know, I know, I know.
And those are the things that we're going to discuss at that meeting, obviously, you know, obviously, they haven't done nothing about it for five years.
No, but rural health care, in general, rural health care needs, you know, you talked to Rob Adlin today about that, he said both Democrats and Republicans should be a little get along, something like that, in open, rural, and so, because they both agree on the, that sets it in order, but.
I guarantee you that at the first meeting we had with Mike and myself in the San Diego District, and the county, and all the participants, the city, county, and St. Louis County, they chose to, and then we have some real good ideas, if International Falls is willing to accept them, or if they can prove us some other way of doing it, that's fine, but otherwise, it's gonna be, you know, you gotta realize, they, they keep saying it ain't that much, and they show the average household what it costs the average household. I think International Falls already had a fourteen percent tax levy, and now they wanna put an ambulance district, which is another, believe it or not, another two to five percent tax, you know, somebody's paying it, so at, at some point, you know, you gotta say, what's enough, is there another way of doing it without charging? Is there another way of doing it without charging anybody? And I got some ideas for them, and if they're receptive to it, that's fine, if they're not, Rainier has his choice, and what he can do, we still can get service, they're still, because it's their district, they still have the service, and the fees are the same, and nothing changes, the same system it is now, but I'm trying to help them out, and I don't mind paying my share and giving them whatever advice I can to help them, so, if you can help them out with the situation, great. If we can lobby to give us some more money for some of these fees, great, I have no issue with that, so.
I, I have questions regarding, you know, you brought up the pier of Rainier thing, so, you know, I mean, the, one of the issues is that according to your L C C M R grant for 762,000 dollars, it says on that grant that this is going to be for recreational holds 25 feet and long, 26 feet and longer, with eight overnight slips and two daytime slips, 18 overnight slips and two daytime slips, and the overnight can stay for two weeks, now that's what the 762,000 says, okay? Now, if you move on to the 2.1 million for either the bonding or the L C C M R, the language changes. So the big question I have is, what is the language? What is the correct language? What are, is this going to be an 18 overnight for two weeks with an eight daytime?
It is not going to be overnight, that was in the big grant voting.
No, that is in the 7,600...
Okay, again, I'm not so familiar with...
I'm very familiar with it.
Well, well, good, and I'm not gonna comment on that until I read it and everything else, but what we're trying to do right now is, so I have a secure fund, this additional 2.1, as you say, that I am familiar with, and other grants is written for that, and then after that, if it's into the design, if we get it, it's into the final design and everything else, but I think it was a consensus in the city that we didn't want people here for 14 nights, over 14 nights.
But you've never had a public meeting for that, you have a public hearing, excuse me, there has been no public hearing where you actually have to take input and report.
Well, so, we're gonna have all that stuff right now, we said we're gonna have all that stuff, and I don't know, the engineer has got scatting, and kind of throwing everything in his lap, he kind of knows when we have to have this stuff and when we do have this stuff, and, and we're gonna have it, but that's all I can tell you, and I don't know whether that's...
But I'm just saying, the language is different from one grant to the other grant.
I see you pointing that out, and that, and that's a good, and I don't know if that's gonna be a problem or not.
It is a problem, but, trust me, I've investigated, it's a problem, you have to do something about it, but last week you all voted to go ahead and continue with things, and you have to keep the plan, that, that plan is based on the 18 overnight and eight daytime, that's what the plan is based on.
I can't ask that, I don't have it in front of me, I don't know what the grant says, but I don't know what we have for amendments to it, and if we have to amend it, that's a lot to do, I can't tell you that.
You can't just amend it, you have to go back to the state or back to the L C C M R, it's just that you can't say, oh, well, we're gonna change it, you have to go through a process.
I, I wouldn't doubt that a bit, but if that's necessary, that's probably what we'll have to do, but first of all, we gotta see if we're gonna get it, so I'm not gonna get the cart in front of the horse here.
But it's been messy from day to night, I think.
Yes.
Okay, anything else? Motion, then we can move on to John's second. On favor? I, both, so carry.